Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Tipton, would you please lead us in the invocation? If everybody would please stand and join us.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. This evening, we're gathered to conduct the business of the people of St. Lucie County. May our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us as together, we build this community for the future with a keen eye on the needs of today. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just. Thank you. I do want to recognize we have a special guest with us this evening. We have Mallory Cunningham. She's been shadowing me today. She's Miss St. Lucie County Teen 2019, so thanks for joining us. She's off to a great start. I'm going to reverse if it's okay with the board. I'm going to go ahead and do the approval of the minutes and then I want to do the proclamation and then go to public comment because we see a lot of great people here tonight that I'm sure you're anxious to speak, so that the people that are here to receive the proclamations, we can go ahead and move them if the board's okay with that. Is that okay with the board?
Sure.
Okay, so is there an approval for the minutes from February 18th?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Thank you, motion carries. So, Madam Secretary, would you please move on to the proclamation, please?
Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. March 2020 is American Red Cross Month, a time when we recognize the humanitarian organization that eases people's sufferings during life's emergencies in St. Lucie County, across the United States, and around the world. The Coast to Heartland Chapter has a long history of helping our neighbors in need by delivering shelter, care, and hope during disasters, making our communities safer through its lifesaving home fire campaign, teaching skills that save lives, and supporting military, veterans, and their families. During this Red Cross Month, we thank and honor the selfless volunteers, dedicated employees, and generous supporters who make this compassionate work possible. Last fiscal year in St. Lucie County, more than 250 Coast to Heartland Chapter volunteers assisted 170 people affected by 49 home fires in St. Lucie County by addressing their urgent needs like food, lodging, and providing recovery support. Meanwhile, the Red Cross continues to work with its partners to prevent fire tragedies through its National Home Fire Campaign, which installed its 2,000,000 free smoke alarm last year and has saved more than 680 lives across the country since launching five years ago. In St. Lucie County, the Coast to Heartland Chapter and local partners have installed more than 120 free smoke alarms and made more than 65 households safer from the threat of home fires last year. Additionally, in St. Lucie County, the Red Cross provides disaster education and services to the military members and their families and veterans. We recognize the volunteer heroes in St. Lucie County who make this work possible to help neighbors when they need a helping hand. Every day, people in our community depend on the American Red Cross, whose lifesaving mission is powered by the devotion of volunteers, generosity of donors, and partnership of community organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, this board does hereby proclaim March 2020 as American Red Cross Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted this third day of March 2020.
So I'm going to allow you to ask the board, is there a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Is there?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Anybody oppose?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Good job.
And we have with us tonight, we have Phil Broder, I can never, Broder, I was correct, and Sarah Rui. Rui, if you would like to say a few words, and I think Eric would like to take a picture. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I just wanted to address for a moment today our appreciation for the partnership and collaboration we have with our county, elected officials. You're always receptive to us when we come to you to discuss our concerns and our issues for making sure this community is properly provided the American Red Cross services that we try to offer to all of our South Florida region and especially here in our local community. There was a few things said on the proclamation you might not really have caught, and I just want to take a moment to let you know, we have a disaster action team that's on call 24 hours a day, and they respond when asked to by, we have a call down system through the fire district, they'll let us know when a house fire takes place, and we go and we provide services. Now, I know most of you are aware of those services, but let me just draw it home. This, since July 1st, which is the beginning of our fiscal year of last, of 2019, seven months, we have provided services to 132 families in this community, and we have provided disaster relief for them, because, you know, disaster strikes, it's not always a hurricane. It can be anything. It could be a flood, it could be a fire. In fact, in Tennessee, last night, it was a tornado. We are there. We are right there to provide the need, and we can't do it without the collaboration and cooperation we get from our elected officials. So I want to thank you for taking the moment to recognize us, and I would just encourage you to, if you have any questions about our services, give us a call. I will be happy to sit down and talk to you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just thank both Phil and Leonard. They are volunteers. I'm the executive director, they are volunteers. They are our workforce. More than 90% of our workforce is done by them, and we couldn't do it without them and the generosity of donors, because as you guys know, but the public may not know, we're not a government organization, so our funding comes from donors just like you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Now, we're going to move to item four, to public comment. The secretary does have some names, and if you're wishing to speak, there's some cards up here that you'll need to fill out, and you can leave with the secretary. We are going to ask that for those of you that are coming up to speak, to please keep it to three minutes, because that is the time limit for the public comment, and I'd like to remind everybody at this time to please make sure your cellphones are on silent so that there's no disruption of the meeting. So Madam Secretary, would you call the first person, please?
Mark DeRosa.
Hello. My name's Mark DeRosa. I spoke with you all last fall about the millage rate. I think ironically, I was the first one to speak at that meeting as well. I just would like to bring up the idea that we attempt to lower the millage rate at the budget hearings this year. As a taxpayer, we've had seven straight years of rising assessments. We had a half cent sales tax that was passed. That was supposed to relieve some of the strain on property taxpayers. We had the school board referendum passed last year, and that's an additional mill. All of this has caused our taxes to go up by as much as 15% in one year, depending on where you live. And the county as a whole is receiving over 40% more revenue year over year than we were just in 2013. That wasn't too long ago. So I don't see how our expenses have grown by that much to accommodate this much of a raise in property taxes. As a profession, I'm a landlord, and I can tell you that I've seen the cost of living rise since I started that profession in 2013. I used to rent two-bedroom apartments for $4.75, and now those are going for $8.50. And I'm not blind to the fact that a lot of that is due to demand, people are moving to the area. It's not just because of taxes, but it definitely contributes. And my concern is I see more and more people who are moving in with family, combining living spaces, in order to be able to afford to stay here, and when I'm doing this as a living, I have to make a profit or I'm not going to do it anymore. So at some point, somebody has to eat that cost, and it's either going to be me, and then it becomes unprofitable, or it's going to be my tenant, and their quality of living goes down. So, and that also goes for retirees, a lot of people who are moving down here because it's affordable. They're here on fixed incomes. You know, the millage rate stays the same, the values go up, and then people are pushed out. So I'm concerned about the affordability of living in this county. I emailed you all last June to express my concerns, and for the most part, that fell on deaf ears. I believe we need real tax relief this year. We don't need a token reduction, just so that you all said that you lowered taxes. I think we need a substantial relief for the people who pay taxes in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Shaw.
Good evening, Paul Shaw, 30-year resident here. I'm also property owner, residential and commercial. And, you know, the assessment is going up, and that should mean the millage goes down. Unfortunately, we had the millage rate increase in the last time. Thank God for the 10% cap on this, you know, 10, prior to 10 years ago, you didn't have that, otherwise you would actually go so strange to, that we were falling off a cliff again like we did in 2006. I had a call from the bracers office, you know, discussing one of my properties, assessment's going to go up. It was locked in. I bought it last year, so honestly, got me pretty upset thinking about whether it's really good to invest sometimes. Mark brought something up on what I've noticed in rental properties. Everybody's saying on the appraised, well, you know, you've got good rental income here and this and that. There's so many, whether it's a two-bedroom, one-bath, one-bedroom, a house. You, frequently, you have so many income earners in that property to make up so they can pay the rent, and that is really a false reading, a false value, you know? If it takes three income earners to hang out in a two-bedroom apartment, obviously something is wrong. I mean, they might be paying $900, or in the house, $1,600, but you have three adults living in there. That is something wrong. Technically, it's not even legal, but according to county records. So if you, you've got to keep that in mind. If you think, oh, wow, our rents are good, you know, $1,000 bucks, $1,200 bucks, so that thing must be worth a ton of money. Let's assess it, let's raise it up. Forget about it. See how many people are living in there, you know? Two, three families. So it's not exactly what you think it is, and that's why you've got to keep a close eye on this, on this tax business, on the assessment and keep it down, so people can actually, once you own it, you think you, or even if it's paid off, you think you're able to afford it. As people have paid off properties and still can't keep it, you still get hammered to the point where it's, you know, a threat to them. So keep all that in mind and advise those other people that have to deal with these values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Edge.
Good evening. My name's Joe Edge, and I'm not a candidate for public office, just for the record. I'm a business owner in Port St. Lucie, have been for the last 28 years, been a Florida resident, St. Lucie County resident for 30 years, and I'm also a landlord, so I certainly understand property values. So I just want to offer up some hard facts for the arguments about the millage rate, property values, and things like that. St. Lucie County does have the highest millage rate. The numbers, the numbers don't lie, but based on taxable value, St. Lucie County is ranked 44th in taxable value statewide, and 43rd in the revenue that we collect, excuse me, ranked 26th in taxable value, okay? 43rd in revenue that we collect. Those numbers in and of itself indicate we have a property value problem, okay? I don't, I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't want higher property values. I don't think so. So what we have is a property value problem, not a millage rate problem, because when we raise property values, you're going to be forced to lower the millage rate. You don't have a choice, okay? But we do have fixed expenses. We've got a fire department, a sheriff's department, a school district, and other infrastructure issues that we have to grow as a county. For the record, Monroe County has the lowest millage rate in the state of Florida. That's the keys. They also have the highest property values. So what's that tell you? We've got a property value problem. There's some other issues that are related to this. Why do people live in St. Lucie County and commute out of the county to work? Because it's cheaper to live here than it is in Palm Beach or Martin County. Martin County is ranked fifth in property values, and they're our neighbors, okay? St. Lucie County's code enforcement is weak at best. They're good people, I know that. They get no support from the upper management and the county commission. If I asked you right now, how much money is owed to the taxpayers of the city for unpaid code enforcement fines, what would you say? Not one of you knows the answer to that, and you should. As a business owner, I walk into work every day, the first thing I find out, who owes me money, and what am I doing to collect it? Okay? So we can lower our millage rate by doing that, collect the money that's owed to us, and if there's some hurt feelings, that's too bad. If somebody that's violated the rules owes us money, what about the people that abide by the rules? Okay? If you want to, if you, if you, if you want to improve property values, this, I'm going to go over a little bit. You have to have a proactive-
Joe, I can't let you do that. It's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Kristin Romero.
Hi, good evening all. My name is Kirsten Romero, and I am a Florida-born native. A year ago, we moved here from Broward County because we were attracted to the family-friendly vibe, and there was a beautiful school by the name of Alapata Flats out on Glades Road with a new community going up, and my children said to me, Mom, we would love to live in this community. And so I said, children, let your father and I decide if we can afford to live here. And in doing that, we went over the tax questions, we went over escrow, we went over everything, and I just wanted to reiterate what Mark said. Our problem is, is our property tax bill does not match our property assessment, and last, in February, the new mortgage was assessed, and it's actually $1,200 more. So when we were looking at what our mortgage was going to be, we signed a 30-year mortgage, understanding that our taxes were going to be included in our escrow, and we wouldn't have a problem, and now our mortgage has doubled by $1,200 from 1,700 to $2,900. And we are in danger of going into foreclosure, and our credit, and our entire home, our children being homeless, and not having an answer, and having an answer to fix the problem. And so here today, I speak for other families that are going through the same thing in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charlie and Lisa Graff.
Hi, my name is Charlie Graff. I moved down here almost four years ago, and I retired down here, and with the, if they decide to raise, you know, the taxes and the millage, you know, we're not going to be, I'm not going to be able to stay here. I'm going to have to move somewhere where there's lower taxes. I don't understand what's driving the cost up so high. Wish it could do something to help us out. That's it.
William Rhodes.
Hi, I live here in Port St. Lucie, and I moved here 10 years ago. And as a painting contractor, I was forced to take a $10-an-hour hit compared to what I was used to making up north, and I found out that I couldn't live here on a $10-an-hour cut in pay. So I took advantage of my good credit, and I bought some rental properties, thinking that was going to be the way to subsidize us. Well, here we are 10 years later, and my tax bill's outrageous. I'm at the point now with four rental properties where two of them are just offsetters to pay for taxes and insurance, and the two that I have, the people are moving out, sticking me on rent because they say they can't afford it. So I don't know where this is going to end, but thank you.
Susan Rhodes. Lisa Perry.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, sorry, guys, but I live in Par Estates. We built a house, we moved here two years ago, we love it here, but our tax bill is $6,200 a year. Now, if you're going to tell me that that tax bill is going to go up 10%, that's going to push us right out of the neighborhood. I mean, that's $500, over $500 a month in just taxes. How can I live like that? You can't. It's a beautiful area, but I can't even now get the money back out of my home because I haven't lived in it long enough. So now, what do we do? I never expected my tax bill to be $6,200, but we paid it like we're supposed to. We have to do something. I mean, homes, after everybody got their tax bills, go walk around or drive around Par Estates. Homes went up for sale left and right. Why are we losing people? It's because of the tax bill. And the next one is going to be us, because if next year it goes up even higher, we're not going to be able to afford it. You know, you say it can go up 10%. Okay, that's another $620. That's a lot of money. Thank you.
Jan Copeland.
Hi, I'm Jan Copeland. I was here at the last hearing regarding the property taxes. I am at the top of my homestead exemptions. I can't afford double property taxes. The thing is, I either have to move out of the county, or I have to get a part-time job. I'm not looking forward to either of those. I am a senior citizen, retired income, and my property taxes have doubled. It's a nice neighborhood, I don't want to leave it. We stayed here for four years renting a property about three miles south of where we live, and now, you know, we've bought a property, thinking that I could afford it. It just gets worse. So you keep nickel and diming me, and I just, I can't keep the, you know, the party going. So thank you.
Sophie Carter.
Hi, my name's Sophie Carter. I've been here for 15 years. I've come to Loveport-St. Lucie. I've gone through the crisis of where my property value was doing good. It dropped, seeing people, seeing empty homes all around my neighborhood, and I feel like that's exactly what's going to happen again. I came to these meetings when I would speak to, I think it was called an assessor, where I would go and tell them my home is identical to the home next door to me, and my property taxes were higher than that person's. I built at the exact same time, I built the same model home, same builder. It couldn't have been more apples to apples, and it was a death's ear of the person constantly stating no, and not just to me. I sat, sat down after he said no to me, that no, there- I sat down after he said no to me, that, "No, they're not going to do anything," and listened to one person after another, especially seniors, like you're hearing here, of people stating, "You guys are going to kill us. You're going to force us out of our home, force us to move into our kids, with our kids. Something needs to be done." And it can't be a recap of what happened in 2008. And I remember you being at several of the meetings when, back in 2008, and you were right behind us on, you know, listening to us and speaking with us. You know, just please listen to our cries. We don't want to leave Port St. Lucie. We love it. But Port St. Lucie is not Jupiter. It's not West Palm Beach. We should not have the millage rate be the highest in the entire state. And, sorry, while I have a minute left, one other thing is, impact fees here in Port St. Lucie are ridiculous, and again, the highest in the entire state, which is, I cannot figure out why. This is not West Palm Beach. This is not Jupiter. I'd love it to be. I think we'd all love our property value to be millions of dollars, but we don't have that here in Port St. Lucie. So please, listen to our cries. Do something. If you want us to do something to help us all, as a community together, whatever you need, we will do it. But you need to work with us. Otherwise, you're going to see exactly what happened in 2008.
Christopher Wills or Willis?
Hello, good evening. My name's Christopher Willis. I moved here from West Palm Beach about a year ago. Gandhi had once said, "Be the change that you want to see in the world." My wife is a pre-K teacher, a job that does not pay well, but she's passionate about. She's got a side job where she makes balloon animals, does face painting for children. I am in the -- I volunteer two days of the week at St. Lucie Medical. That's true volunteer work, no pay. I'm also a member of your Florida National Guard. When the hurricanes roll in, I'm the one that gets activated, pulled away from my family for weeks at a time. For all this selfless service, I saw my taxes jump up two months ago, $450 per month. That is a swift kick in the groin for those of us that live paycheck to paycheck. Now, in reaction to that, I've had to cut our dental coverage and make other smaller concessions, not going out to eat, you know, gifts, that sort of thing. But I'd like to see some relief as far as our taxes for an effort to try to make the world around us a little bit better. Thank you very much.
Agulay? Is there a Clarita? Robert Lemoju on Silverwood? Mr. Durham on Vitalia Court?
It's Ms. Diane Duhane. Sorry for the bad handwriting. I live in Port St. Lucie. I'm in District 5. I moved here from Connecticut and also from Broward County. And I'm a retired attorney, and I'm a former schoolteacher. I am absolutely shocked at how much our taxes have increased over the last four years. They went from about $6,300 a year to about $8,300 a year. And now they're much higher than they were in Broward in a comparable home. I just ask that each of you, please, go back, sharpen your pencils, and stop raising our taxes. Even better, please lower them. Our -- thank you. A lot of people have been here before. This is my first time here. I did see it on Facebook, in case any of you were wondering how we heard about this. A lot of us did hear about it on Facebook. I'm really disappointed to hear that people have written, and their comments have fallen on deaf ears. It sounds like there was not even a reply sent to these people. I think that's disgrace. It seems that the commission, I'm not saying every one of you, but it seems possibly that a lot of you don't even care if we do move out of the county, because if we can't afford it, too bad, just go. We'd like to stay, and while we are here, our votes count. And please keep that in mind, and I thank you very much for your time.
Jerry Bootsheller?
Yeah, Jerry Beakler. I live in Port St. Lucie. I'm on the Budget Committee, so I invite everybody here to show up. It's early in the morning, 7:30, but we have coffee. March 20th is the next one. But at the other end of here, at the same, you get off the elevator, go to the left. The next meeting after that is April 17th. Because, you know, there's real needs in this county. The sheriff comes to us, he needs vehicles. We have 1,380 people in the jails. Maybe we can lower that population. It costs $100 a day to keep a prisoner. We also have a problem that was expressed at our last meeting. Just medical is 11 million, just for the prisoners in the jail, when they have to go off-site to a hospital. There's things that can be done there as far as legislation. At the federal level, there's a bill, right now, if they have VA coverage, if they have Medicare coverage, if they have Medicaid coverage, if they have any sort of insurance coverage, it gets stripped from them. And then the burden falls on us. And I don't think that's right. There's bills sponsored by several Democrats, but it needs bipartisan Republican support in order to pass, and that would lessen the burden for us. We have other things, like the beaches, where the sand erodes, and it's a cost of about $10,000 every day, or $4 million a year. There's things being done. There's a sand catchment, which will make sand available and cheaper to refurbish these beaches, but there's other things we can look at. There's a small area in River County where they've built barriers many years ago when the beach was eroding, at that area where the restaurants are, the heart of Verro Beach. And for some reason, that had an effect on restoring the beach. It kept that area of the beach from eroding. So this is something we can start to look at. But there's really practical things that need to be done in order to lower the budget cost, so that we can lower the taxes. But you first have to lower the expenses in order to lower the taxes. That's all I'm saying. And another thing is our reserve. We've been borrowing from it. The reserve is actually going down in this county. And to me, that's a concern. We were in the bullseye of Dorian. Remember that? And luckily, it didn't hit us, but other people were very much impacted in the Bahamas. That could have been us. It happened in Bay County. Remember Hurricane Michael? It was going to be a category 2, category 5, the storm surge. They now have $450 million worth of debt. They have to borrow money. They're paying $12 to $13 million a year just in interest on their debt. That could be, that could have been us. So there's other concerns here that we have to consider. We need to grow a reserve rather than eliminate a reserve.
Chris Thompson?
Members of the Board, Chairman Townsend. My name's Chris Thompson. I reside on, off of Bay Shore Avenue, Nautical Avenue in Port St. Lucie. It's past September, dozens of St. Lucie residents pled with this board to ease the highest in the state tax board, and that's forcing many of our elderly to have to move out, prospective buyers to look elsewhere, and artificially depressing our home values. And sadly, only one of you, our Chairwoman, answered that plea to lower our taxes, or to vote to lower our taxes. And so still, we have the highest tax rate in the state of Florida. St. Lucie is the 34th out of 67 counties in the state for income level. Yet somehow, we have the highest average millage rate in the state. Now, back in September, in this meeting, we were told that it was not the county's fault, it was the city's fault. Not surprisingly, we've approached our city leaders, and they've told us that the county's to blame. None of our leaders want to take any responsibility. We don't care who does it, we just want our taxes lowered. Now, many of you have justified having the highest tax rate in the state, if that can even be justified, by saying that it is necessary to have basic services. The numbers don't support that. St. Lucie municipal and county expenses are roughly 10% higher than both Martin and Indian River, meaning wealthier counties that can afford the additional expense actually have lower, quote, necessities, basic necessities than we do, because they actually spend less per person, even though they're wealthier counties. It seems to me that this is St. Lucie's, our problem, is that we, our leaders have a champagne taste on a beer budget, and that beer happens to be the highest price in the state of Florida. We have a lot of things that we're known for here. We're one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Florida. We have one of the most amazing rivers in the world. It's one of the most biodiverse estuaries. We have, in my opinion, the greatest people in the state of Florida. But we've got to shake this mantle of being the number-one highest tax state or county in the state of Florida. Now, no one's asking you to lower our taxes to zero, but our tax rates are 25 to 40% higher than our neighboring counties, causing many people, some of whom have spoken tonight, to consider moving to lower-tax counties. The fact is, we shouldn't have to leave. The politicians keeping our taxes high need to leave. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no one else who's signed up for public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open it up. If there is anybody else, you can come to the podium and state your name for the record, please. And again, it's three minutes. Would you like to go, since you're right there, sir?
My name's Les Thompson, and Chris is my son. Just wanted to mention something he told me that he didn't mention. He put this website up a week ago, and there's 21,600 people that hit that website. You better watch out. There's a lot of angry people out there. Got some Republican candidates here that are ahead of you. Holes, so what do you think?
Hi, my name is Chris Rainey. I'm recently retired from the military. I just moved back. My family moved down here in '78, so we've been here for quite a long time. So we've seen a lot over time. And my biggest thing is this, right? We keep talking about, no one wants to say, "Hey, we can actually save money," and how, oh, nobody wants to say, "Well, this is how we're going to do it." Well, here's an idea, just an idea, all right? Instead of sitting in $500 chairs, get regular chairs, okay? Instead of spending all the money on make everything look so great, like the, well, how much do we pay for mulch? All right? Come on, enough's enough, all right? At what point is enough out of our pockets? Okay? You can skip on stuff, okay? We don't need all this mulch. We don't need all these new palm trees on every single road, all right? Put some grass down and call it a day. All right? Enough, all right? We're tired of pain. Look at yourself and say, "Hey, what can we do to solve this problem?" That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Victor Balager. I moved here from New Jersey 10 years ago. I spent a year online looking at places to move to when I retired from the fire department. And everything that I looked up online showed that Port St. Lucie County was what I was looking for. I retired from the military. Did 30 years of service between active duty and guard time, 20 years at the fire department. I'm disabled, and I think I've served my community enough. But when I get my tax bill, every year, it keeps going up. There's only one other problem. My taxes go up, my insurance went from $5 something a year for my homeowners, $1,300. I have never made a claim. My car insurance goes up. So not only is my property tax killing me, the homeowners is killing me, and the auto insurance. So it's getting to a point where two of my neighbors are moving out. They've been here less than five years, and they're moving. I've been here 10 years. And at the rate the county administrators are running the show here, maybe it's time that you should start really talking to the people behind me and ask them how they feel, because it seems like nobody cares. I've made calls to my local office and the mayor's office in Port St. Lucie. In January, I'm still waiting for a phone call. They don't care. As a taxpayer, you work for us. We don't work for you. Okay? I risked my life and limb for the community that I serve for in the public sector as a firefighter and as a military veteran. So I think it's time that you, as the people running the show, pay us some respect and courtesy, and think about what you're doing before you start stealing from our pocket. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay, it's on.
Okay. Hi, my name is Logan Zimmerman. Obviously, I'm 18. I'm learning more about the political stuff as I go along. But a lot of people here, I think, have issues with their taxes, and this is a big problem for them. And I think that they've come to you tonight, and they have expressed their concerns, and I honestly think, not to be mean or throw shade, but I think it's time to listen. You know, there's a lot of people here that have said that they're in danger of moving out of St. Lucie County because of this. I think it's time for the leaders that we have elected, whether we agree or not, to listen to the people, you know? And I think that this is a good tipping point for the people, because now they have expressed their concerns, and now it falls on your guys. So let's get it done. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Bana. I reside at 844 Southwest Tulip Boulevard. St. Lucie County has the highest millage rate in the state, and I realize that this commission may very well give us later this year an election-year tax cut. However, it's very important to remember that we had an incredible opportunity to give our citizens relief this past year. As was mentioned earlier, the infrastructure referendum passed, Amendment 1 failed. The school district took over the responsibility of paying for school deputies. Its values rose again, but only one commissioner voted to give us relief when we needed it. What did the commission as a whole offer us? Smokescreens, excuses, gavels, and political games. I want to address a few of these concerns. Some say the county's per capita tax rate is only $7 above the state average. Ignoring the fact that we're still above the average, per capita is not a very good figure to use, because it does not take income into account. One commissioner in particular took to social media this weekend to insult the intelligence of our citizens. Every citizen may not understand the nuances of local government. They just know their taxes are high, and they expect their leaders to do something about it. Many ask where we can cut things. They try to stroke up fears of massive cuts and reductions in services. The city of Port St. Lucie has reduced taxes four years in a row. They're making progress. There haven't been devastating cuts. Some say this is because the city council members raised the rate one mil five years ago. But what matters is what the tax is today. And when you compare the 10 largest cities in Florida, Port St. Lucie's city millage is the third-lowest out of the 10. When you add the BOCC tax rates to those city millage rates, we jump from the third-lowest to the highest. Let's compare apples to apples instead of smokescreens. Someone pointed out earlier, we were 26th in taxable assessments. Okay. No one's saying we have to be the lowest-tax county in the state. We're saying we shouldn't be the highest-tax state. We had someone from the Citizens Budget Committee here earlier. They suggested a 1% reduction in expenditures. When I put a public records request in for any proposal to do this in any department, I came back empty-handed. And so, yes, we may get an election-year tax cut. I think we all know that. But it's important to remember who did what and when. Thank you.
Good evening. Joe James. Live at 758 Southeast Ablet Lane. Realtor here in Port St. Lucie. And just from the aspect of a Realtor, the numbers of people who are moving into the state of Florida, approximately 800 people a day. Now, as a Realtor, that should be good news, because that's a captive audience. But when the people call to see where the appropriate place is for them to live, the cost of their living is going to make, it's going to drive that decision. cost of their living is gonna make, it's gonna drive that decision. So, you have expenses that you hope to be funded through occupied housing. That's where we get our revenue. If you push these people out of their homes and you make it unlikely that new people are going to move in, where are you gonna get your budget? How are you gonna meet budget then? You got less people living here, you've got the infrastructure, you've got South Bend all the way up through Becker Avenue, everything's all built, there's roads there, there's undeveloped properties. It'll probably stay undeveloped if you don't get this under control. And you better do it quick. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to come forward on the public comment at this time? Seeing no movement, we're gonna close the public comment. We're gonna come back to the board. I've already closed the public comment. I apologize. We try to follow the rules. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wishes to change, add, or comment onto the consent agenda? Also, I'd like to make a note that on the consent agenda...
You wanna wait a second?
Yeah.
Give him a second.
Okay, so we're gonna come back. There is one addition. It was an attachment that was provided and distributed on 8B, the Aaron Seaport. It was added, I think everybody received it, on the consent agenda. That's the only thing that's been added or changed to the consent agenda. So, does anybody else have anything they would want to change or comment on the consent agenda? If not, I'm open for a motion.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on. To the public hearing. The first item is 9A1.
Madam Chair and County Commissioners, Jeff Brimmer, Deputy County Administrator, for the record. You have this item before you this evening. Staff is recommending that we push this to March 17th.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we're gonna open it up. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this? We're gonna move it forward to the March 17th. I think it'd be the pleasure of the board. But I do, if anybody did come for this item, I do wanna open up the public comment. Is there anybody wishing to speak? We'll close the public comment, come back to the board.
Madam Chair, if I could just add it, before we move it on, I would like to see added to this prior to the discussion, the March 17th meeting, that there at least be verbiage in order to give an exact location of the area. That's not included in this at all.
Okay.
There is reference to a map as an attachment. I have that as part of my PowerPoint presentation, but I'll make sure to get that to each one of the commissioners.
If you would, because it wasn't part of this.
Thank you.
But I'd still like to see the verbiage included. Thank you.
So, is there a motion to continue?
Madam Chair, move to continue this to March 17th at 9:00 AM or soon thereafter as can be heard.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brimmer. 9B for the county attorney. The next public hearing is for the White Way Dairy Road.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Property Acquisition Manager, Joanne Riley, will actually be handling this item and the next item.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, once again, we've gone to this one before and I will be abstaining.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item 9B1 is a public hearing to abandon a portion of White Way Dairy Road. County staff has received a petition from Getler Holdings to abandon a portion of White Way Dairy Road adjacent to their property located at 4401 White Way Dairy Road. This road is actually shown in a teal color here on the map just for reference purposes. On November the 14th of 2019, county staff advertised a public hearing in the St. Lucie News Tribune to be held on December 3rd. At the December 3rd meeting, the Board of County Commissioners approved staff continuing the public hearing until February the 4th of 2020. On February the 4th, the board approved continuing the hearing again to tonight's meeting, November, March 3rd, excuse me. On February 12th, staff, county staff, met with Mr. Schwerer to discuss additional information regarding the White Way Dairy Road. And the following day, on February the 13th, we received a request from Mr. Schwerer, again requesting a postponement of tonight's public hearing to April 7th at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Staff is recommending that the board accept the request from Mr. Schwerer on behalf of Getler Holdings to continue tonight's public hearing to April 7th at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the item may be heard. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
Thank you. We'll come back to the board.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, last time this came through, I had asked if there was any comment from the city of Fort Pierce. I didn't see it in the backup today. I'd like to have, you know, them on record as to what their position is because they actually have annexed probably 90% of all the properties around this, including the roads.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Zdowski, staff did in fact have a meeting with the city of Fort Pierce and we are waiting some documentation from them that hopefully we will be able to include in our agenda package next month.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, this is a public comment. We're gonna open it up to the public. Is anybody wishing to come forward? Seeing none, we're closing public comment. Coming back to the board, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation. April 7th, 6:00 PM.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Also, Madam Secretary, Commissioner Houghton, recused. We'll go to item B2.
Again, Madam Chair, for the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item 9B2 is a public hearing to consider declaring seven parcels surplus property. The clerk of the court has offered seven parcels for sale via internet auction and there were no bidders. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1975027, the parcels were placed on what is referred to as the list of lands available. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1975028, three years after the date the land was offered for public sale, the land shall eschew to the county in which it is located. This board passed ordinance 11014 pursuant to Florida Statute Section 125.35, which prescribes an alternative method to selling, dedicating, or donating real property owned by the county. The St. Lucie County Code of Ordinance, Section 32-28, requires that the county publish a notice in a newspaper of general circulation once at least 20 days prior to the meeting in which the board is going to declare or chooses to declare the parcels surplus. On January the 28th of 2020, this board approved permission to advertise for tonight's public hearing. On February the 8th of 2020, a notice of intent was published in the St. Lucie News Tribune. The parcels range in size from 0.2 to 31.82 acres, as shown on the next several slides. And I will bounce through those relatively slowly. No objections have been received by county staff. County staff has determined that there is no county use for these parcels. And to wrap things up, staff would recommend that the board declare the seven parcels surplus and direct staff to dispose of the parcels according to our ordinance 11014. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. Any questions for open up public comment?
Please. Madam Chair, each time these come through, I do ask the same question and I know that you go back to staff. But I do see a property off of Avenue S and I don't know if our water quality folks are here, but that looks like a property that could be used for drainage in the future. There's a property off Oleander and the other property that is north of the Ten Mile Creek State Preserve. I'm just wondering if that wouldn't be something we could utilize for drainage from 70 at some point?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Zdowski, our first step in this process is to declare the parcels surplus. We will go back to county staff to ensure that there is no need. We have done so prior, but we can certainly also go back once again just to confirm that with them, that there are no needs for stormwater in those specific areas.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? We'll open up the public comment. Is there anybody wishing to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We'll come back to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have planning and zoning for the text amendment. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jody Netchwick, presenting the applicant initiative Land Development Code text amendment for the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District to allow for self-storage facilities limited to enclosed storage as an eligible conditional use. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on February 21st, 2020. The purpose of the Commercial Neighborhood District is to provide and protect an environment suitable for limited retail trade and service activities covering a relatively small area that is intended to serve the population living in surrounding neighborhoods. The following are permitted uses allowed within the Commercial Neighborhood District. A self-storage facility within a fully enclosed structure is a less intensive passive use than a sporting goods, retail store, and household appliances and lawn and garden stores, which are permitted by right within the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District. In accordance to Land Development Code, Section 11.07.03, these are standards of review when staff evaluates a conditional use application on a case-by-case basis. The conditional use process requires public hearings, public notices to neighbors within 500-foot radius, posting of public property, and display advertisement in local newspapers. This map shows the different areas zoned commercial neighborhood broken down in eight different areas within St. Lucie County. Area 1, the majority of the commercial neighborhood properties are located within the Lakewood Park subdivision off of Turnpike Peter Road. The parcel north of US Highway Number 1 approaching the North County line and the parcel located on North Hutchinson Island was the old PV Martins Restaurant. Area 2 is located on 25th Street within the Paradise Park area, just north of the city of Fort Pierce City Limits. The airport is just north of St. Lucie Boulevard. Area 3 is the general area of Orange Avenue just west of the Florida Turnpike. Area 4 is located on Okeechobee Road, surrounded by a cluster of commercial neighborhood adjacent to the city of Fort Pierce City Limits. Area 5 is located west of the Florida Turnpike on State Road 70. And Area 6 is located at the corner of Glades Cut Off Road and Range Line Road. Sorry. Area 7 is located Midway Road within the White City area. And Area 8 is located on South Hutchinson Island. The 3.4 acre site is the Island Dune Clubhouse Restaurant. Staff has received a conditional use permit and minor site plan application for a self-storage facility with enclosed storage on the 1.9 acre parcel site, contingent upon approval of this text amendment. The Cedric site is currently undeveloped and adjacent to the Islandia 1 and 2 condominiums on the west side of South Ocean Boulevard. I'm sorry, South Ocean Drive. At this time, staff recommends the approve, the adoption of Ordinance 2028, amending the Land Development Code text amendment for self-storage facilities limited to enclosed storage as an eligible conditional use within the CN Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Jody before I open up to public comment? I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Is there anybody wishing to come forward on the text amendment? Seeing none, we're gonna close it and come back to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval text amendment?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries, thank you.
The next item is item 9C3, and this is the Baron Island Storage Conditional Use Permit. Staff is recommending the board to continue this public hearing until Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Before we move forward, this is quasi-judicial. Is there any disclosures any of the board members have?
Madam Chair, I've only spoke with staff.
Myself as well.
I spoke with staff, but I believe I met with a representative of the applicant.
Yeah, I did too. So, I've met with Mr. Mowry briefly and staff. So, is there any questions before we? Okay, this is a public comment. Is there anybody wishing to come forward to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close it and come back to the board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recommend the board continue the public hearing to Tuesday, April 17th, 2020, at 9:00 AM or soon thereafter.
Okay, it's April 7th.
7th.
You said 17th. Sounded like.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item 3. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Bethany Grabs with the Planning Department, presenting this petition on behalf of Jay Brida Bell Senior for an amendment to the official zoning atlas. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. The applicant is requesting a changing zoning from institutional to RS3 residential, single-family, three dwelling units per acre. This will allow for development of a single-family detached dwelling in conformance with the proposed zoning district. The item was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 16th and was forwarded to the board with a unanimous recommendation of approval. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 110003 of the Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County, St. Lucie News Tribune on February the 13th. A sign was placed on the property and mail notices were sent out to the surrounding 25 property owners within the 500-foot radius requirement. There have been no objections expressed regarding this request. This is an aerial perspective of the property and the area outlined in red indicates the subject properties. The petition encompasses two contiguous parcels with a combined property size of 1.07 acres. The undeveloped parcels are located on the north side of Edwards Road, approximately 125 feet west of McNeil Road. The properties have a future land use designation of residential urban. Both properties are currently zoned institutional, which is consistent with the residential urban future land use. The amendment proposes a zoning change to RS3. To provide a brief history, in 1998, these properties were zoned, were rezoned from RS3 to institutional by the St. Lucie County Firefighters Benevolent Association, who never initiated development of the properties. The applicant purchased the properties in 2019 and is now seeking to reestablish the former RS3 zone. former RS3 zoning district. As you see on the proposed zoning map, the subject property is illustrated in yellow, representing the RS3 zoning, which is consistent with the current residential zoning districts of the surrounding properties. Staff has reviewed this petition and determined that it conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve this resolution granting the requested rezoning. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to address any questions or comments.
Thank you. Is there any questions? I would like to offer the applicant is, the applicant here?
Yes, here.
Would you like to say anything? If not, you're fine. If you do, please come to the microphone, please, and state your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jay Breiderbell. I bought these properties last year from the firefighters department. They were going to build a union hall there, and they didn't, so I was able to buy the properties. I'm hoping to get it zoned back changed so I can build a home there for myself and my family. Just from what happened earlier tonight, I just hope my taxes don't go through the roof. I appreciate the approval of it so I can get started on my home.
Thank you. So this is quasi-judicial. Is there any disclosures?
Madam Chair, I've only spoke with staff.
Staff as well.
Look at staff.
As myself, staff only. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public wishing to come forward? We do not see anybody. We're going to close the public comment and come back to the board.
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, sir. Enjoy your home.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item. St. Lucie Gardens Apartments.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The subject item is a request for rezoning for a property located off Kitterman Road. At St. Lucie Garden Apartments, the applicant, represented by Brazilino Felipe and their representative, Gregory Boggs, is requesting the rezoning amendment to the St. Lucie County's official zoning atlas from RM5, which allows for multiple family residential development up to five dwelling units per acre, to the RM9 residential, multiple-family, nine dwelling units per acre zoning district. This evening's public hearing was noticed in the St. Lucie County News Tribune. Letters were distributed to owners of property within 500 feet of the petition site and a sign posted on the premises of the project area. As highlighted, the property is located east of US Highway One on Kitterman Road, roughly a quarter mile east on the north side. This 9.71-acre parcel of land was previously utilized for citrus crops and a single-family residence. The majority of the site is clear and vacant. The applicant's proposing this rezoning with a concurrent site plan, which will be evaluated by the Board of County Commissioners later this month, March 17th, pending authorization of this rezoning. Subject site is along Kitterman Road. We have the Kitterman Woods Apartment Complex developed to the south. We have to the east roughly 40 acres of property, sorry, roughly 30 acres of property acquired by St. Lucie County in 2019, and we have commercial and residential development further to the west at the intersection of US Highway One in Kitterman. Recently, a burking was developed. Highlighted, this project location is east of US Highway One along the St. Lucie County Transit Bus System route. We have Savannah Ridge Elementary School situated to the south of the site. This area is continuously seeing infill, commercial, and even some residential development. The applicant, who owns and manages the St. Lucie Oaks Residential Project further south on US Highway One, is pursuing development of this project to provide for supply of market rate housing in our community. It's highlighted, the existing zoning RM5 allows for development up to five dwelling units per acre. The applicant's proposing rezoning to RM9, consistent with the residential medium-density future land use designated by St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, also consistent with the zoning designation of the Kitterman Woods Project and land to the south of the site. We have commercial property further to the west, a utility district to the north, which is F. Florida Power and Lights Electrical Interchange Lines. The comprehensive plan for this site allows for maximum residential development up to nine dwelling units per acre, accounting for the physical suitability of the property in considering rezoning and the proposed intensity. Based upon access to public facilities, utilities through Port St. Lucie, as well as transportation infrastructure, the proposal is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. It will provide access to a variety of housing typologies in our community, support affordable housing, and infill development in this targeted area within the urban service boundary. Based upon consistency with the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan, staff's recommending that the board approve this request for rezoning this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak on it? I also, at this time, did you say that they had a representative here?
Madam Chair, yes, ma'am.
Would you like to say anything? No, we're good to go?
If I may add, for the record, the Planning and Zoning Commission of St. Lucie County offered a unanimous recommendation of approval at their August meeting, 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. It's Greg Boggs, representing the applicant. We thank you. Thanks, staff, very much for the recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is quasi-judicial. Is there any disclosures?
Once again, I've only spoke with staff.
I've met with staff, and I'm pretty sure I've met with Mr. Boggs on this one, because he's got a lot of projects going, so.
Okay, so this is a public comment. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak? We see no one. We're going to close the public comment, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations. Number five. Will you be doing this? Hi.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Chris McCrayne, Associate Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department, presenting the major adjustment to the Harbor Ridge Maintenance Area within the Final Plan Unit Development Site Plan, to be known as Harbor Ridge Lakeside Activity Center. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. Public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on February 21st, 2020. Notices were mailed to the surrounding property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and a sign was placed on the property notifying the public of tonight's public hearing. On December 12th, 2019, applicant held a neighborhood meeting after notifying the property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. Three property owners were in attendance, as well as the applicant and their representative and county staff. Subject property is located at 13490 Gilson Road within the Harbor Ridge subdivision, just north of Becker Road. The 3.48-acre parcel is currently classified as a maintenance facility and also provides for boat and RV storage for the residents of Harbor Ridge. For context, the Harbor Ridge Lifestyle Center Clubhouse is located to the north of the subject property. The subject property is located within the Plan Unit Development zoning district. The properties to the north, south, and west are also zoned planning and development, but the properties to the east located in the Agricultural Residential One zoning district. The subject parcel and all surrounding properties are designated within the residential estate future land use. The requested adjustment seeks to reclassify the existing maintenance areas, the Lakeside Activity Center. The proposed project, or the project is proposed to be completed over two phases. First phase includes the expansion of the surface parking area for vehicles and golf carts, six pickleball courts, two open-air shade structures with associated fencing, landscaping, and lighting, and the existing dog park. The second phase includes the demolition of the existing maintenance structure and the construction of an approximately 8,000-square-foot activity building. In addition to these alterations, the existing septic and drain field will be removed in order to provide for the connection to the Harbor Ridge Utility District to wastewater services, and this connection will allow for the proper disposal of the wastewater created by the site. The subject property currently contains a preserve area consisting of a native pine flatwood habitat and a wetland buffer located along the southern boundary of the property. A scrub flatwood area is located to the east along the adjacent property. These preserve areas will be maintained by the Harbor Ridge Property Owners Association through a preservation area monitoring and management plan. In addition to acting as a preservation area, these wetlands will help to serve as a visual and auditory buffer between the proposed activities and the Wide Waters Residential Subdivision located to the east. The proposed activity center and ancillary uses will be shielded by additional landscaping and screening. The applicant has submitted preliminary architectural elevations for the proposed activity center. The activity center will be of the same architectural design as the Lifestyle Center Clubhouse located to the north of the subject property, and these architectural elevations have been reviewed by our county's architectural consultant and have been found to be in compliance with the county's Land Development Code. Staff finds the major adjustment to meet the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code, section 11.02.07, and are not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff is recommending the Board of County Commissioners grant the major adjustment to the Harbor Ridge Final Planning and Development Maintenance Area Site Plan, subject to the following conditions of approval. These conditions of approval are as follows. Number one is prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, an updated GOFA tortoise survey will be provided to the Environmental Resources Department, and should the survey show impacts within 25 feet of any boroughs, a Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission permit shall be required. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a category-one listed invasive, all category-one listed invasive species must be eradicated from the site. Number three is prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, the applicant must provide the required executed conservation easement for the preserve areas and the approved preservation area monitoring and management plan. And number four is prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, the applicant shall provide a geo-reference shape file or CAD file of the conservation easement boundaries to the Environmental Resources Department. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant and staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I do see the planners out there. Do you want to come forward, say anything? If not?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Nolan with La Cito and Associates, representing the applicant. I'd just like to thank staff. Always a pleasure working with your staff. They had a lot of, you know, good points, good critiques. The preserve area that's highlighted in the yellow hatch, turns out there wasn't a PAMP on that, walking it with ERD and our environmental consultant. We included a PAMP. Also included in the PAMP, though I want to note, is a wetland buffer, a 25-foot wetland buffer. That's it. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is quasi-judicial. Is there disclosures?
Once again, Madam Chair, I've only talked with staff.
Staff as well.
Staff.
Staff. So we're going to open it up to the public. Anybody wishing to come forward at this time, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Lochner, 3191 Northwest Perimeter Road, President of the Wide Waters Property Owners Association. We're the adjacent property owners to the east of the subject property. We have enjoyed the December 19th meeting with the applicants and Harbor Ridge personnel. We had concerns about noise and light at night. They've addressed those. They seem to be most cooperative in terms of making sure that we're good neighbors for each other. We had concerns about floodwater. Mr. Nolan has assured us that they will prepare a floodwater plan that will remove all water from the site so that it doesn't add to the water, sheet flow that sometimes goes over perimeter road. And so we're here to say, we think it's a good idea. We ask you support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We'll come back to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We've come to the end of our meeting. There's no regular agenda items. I do have a few announcements. As we know, that the Prima Vista corridor is under improvements of the road paving, and there's going to be some closures coming up. I'm going to brief them here, but I know it's going to be a lot to remember, so I do believe Mr. Tipton is how, is Eric going to be placing this on the website for everybody to see the closures? I believe he is.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But just to sum the things up, westbound Prima Vista Boulevard at US One, starting Saturday at 8:00 AM, is going to be closed. It'll open back up again Monday at 6:00 AM, and the detour is going to be Crosstown Parkway to Erosa. The paving of the intersection of Prima Vista Boulevard at Floresta, there will be one evening, starting Sunday at 9:00 PM. It will be reopened again at 5:00 AM. The one lane will be open on Prima Vista eastbound and westbound at all times, and this is a Crosstown Parkway to Erosa Boulevard detour. And the intersection paving of Prima Vista at Erosa, there'll be two nights of closure, Monday 9:00 PM to open the Tuesday morning, Tuesday night to the 5:00 AM. This has also been discussed with staff at the city of Port St. Lucie, so they're going to be posting it as well. There will be a minimum of one lane open on Prima Vista eastbound and westbound at all times, and the detours will be east Crosstown Parkway to Floresta and west Crosstown Parkway to Bay Shore. The county does have the message boards in place, northbound US One detour, as well as the Prima Vista, so the message boards will be up. And again, this is going to be on our website as well. So, and I think each of our offices, we're giving this as well, so if we get any phone calls, because we're probably going to get them. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming and being polite and respectful tonight, and I want to thank you for joining us. Hopefully, you've learned a lot today with your shadowing. Mr. Tipton, do you have anything you'd like to close out? But before we do, anybody from the board like to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just to mention that we do have on March 10th, an informal meeting starting at 9:00. An informal is our workshop, and it will be here on the third floor. And then later that afternoon, on March 10th at 1:00 PM, we'll have a special strategic planning session that will be at the Havard L. Finn Center, which is just east of this facility on Virginia Avenue. And then lastly, I'd just like to share that we do have our 2019 annual report out. It is in the libraries, but the best way to view it is online, and that's at stlucico.gov. I want to thank our communications division and our departments for helping to pull the information together, and thank the board and our departments for what I think was an outstanding year. That's all I have.
Thank you again. Everybody have a great night. Thanks for joining us. Is there motion to adjourn? Thank you.
Welcome to order, St. Lucie County Erosion District. Ah, caught y'all. First on the agenda is general public comments. Is there anyone from the public you'd like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to today's regular agenda. There is no minutes, nor is there a consent agenda.
Regular agenda today?
Yes, it is.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We, staff is providing a regular agenda item because of the conditions at Fort Pierce Beach. What we've provided is two work authorizations for the board to consider and approve to implement that design and that emergency effort. This is largely as a result of the Army Corps of Engineers not coming to the table this year. This has happened in 2011 and in 2017. History proves that if we don't address this, we will have some large issues during the hurricane season. So we're looking to implement those. Along with that, we're asking the board to declare an emergency in association with the Federal Fort Pierce Shore Protection Project until the feds come back to do the next nourishment. I think it's prudent to stay on top of this, both at the county level as well as the federal level, because if we find ourselves chronically in the situation which we have, we'll have larger issues in the future with funding. To reiterate, staff recommends board approval of the two work authorizations to implement that design. It's roughly 75,000 cubic yards, similar to the last emergency effort. We're also looking for an emergency declaration concerning the project, and in terms of timing... And in terms of timing, if we're approved, we're looking forward to pulling the trigger on that project within the next week or two, and we'll work with communications to ensure that the public's notified and everyone's safe during the operation.
Are there any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, is the declaration contained in tonight's agenda item? Or is that coming back to us?
It will come back to you, I suppose, yeah.
It says the declaration of emergency is in here.
It's included as part of the recommendation, yes. In order to move forward, because it's inconsistent with our purchasing manual normally, of course, we would bid these items or perhaps, but we don't have time to do that, and it's just an immediate need. So you need to declare an emergency as recommended and then move forward with the two work authorizations as recommended. It's all contained in the staff recommendation.
It can all be done under one motion.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, this, again, this is an emergency effort. We need to implement this before May 31st, so in order to avoid sea turtle nesting season.
Are there any further questions?
Madam Chair, move approval, staff recommendation?
Second.
Motion is second. All is in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes. Thank you once again, Josh.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.